Board of Aldermen will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Morris.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Sagaser.
Here.
Rains.
Here.
Neil.
Present.
Present.
Eight present, we do have a quorum, let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm entertaining a motion to accept the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to add water right after number nine and sewer immediately following that before Alderman comments.
We have a motion to amend the agenda, do we have a, do we have a second?
I second that.
Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the amended, the agenda has been amended to add, tell me again.
Water first and then sewer, please.
Water and sewer.
Between nine and.
Between nine and ten.
Yes.
Okay, the amended, the agenda is amended.
Thank you.
Okay. I have entertained a motion, I'm entertaining a motion for the adoption of bill number twenty twenty-five thirty-eight.
Or three.
Second.
Counselor, counselor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, this is bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, ordinance number forty-sixty, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Polk County Missouri Health Department for city expenditures, a Missouri opioid settlement proceeds to assist with costs associated with the full-time health specialists for the benefit of the city of Polk County related to opioid treatment and prevention.
Mr. Relford, do you, can you kind of bring us up to date on this, I think this is, this is something that predates my participation here, I believe, although I think I remember hearing of it and I'm certainly aware of the opioid settlement.
Yes, yeah, I think it's been a couple of months back, Michelle Morse with the Polk County Health briefed the board, this is part of the opioid settlement, they're asking for assistance for a behavioral health specialist and we've worked with our attorney to, you know, to make sure this is a authorized expense under that settlement, it is and we think it's a worthy cause and the, and the board asked to move forward on this and this is just formalizing that agreement, it's fifty-two thousand dollars a year, for the first year, it'll only be a half a year, six months, so twenty-six thousand dollars, and then we'll put it in the budget thereafter with approval from the board.
Okay, for the comments and explanations.
Just for verification.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I just lost my train of thought now. Yes, thank you. It's not coming anything out of the budget, it's a specific fund that we get from the state.
Yeah, we've received opioid settlement funds and we're going to be receiving those over the next several years, five, six years, and that's what we'll use to pay for this position.
Further comments? I'm entertaining a motion for a second reading.
Second reading.
Second.
Counselor.
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, ordinance number forty-sixty, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Polk County Missouri Health Department for city expenditures and Missouri opioid settlement proceeds to assist with costs associated with the full-time health specialists for the benefit of the city of Polk County related to opioid treatment and prevention.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Sagaser.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
By count of eight to zero, we have accepted and passed bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Let's move on to bill, to item number two on the agenda, housing advocacy coordinator and support for community outreach ministries, who is here to speak on behalf?
Well, actually, Mr. Titterton's already spoke about this, I think it's been about a month ago.
Yes, I believe so.
You came to the board about the position, I think he has identified an individual to fill that position and tonight I'm bringing it up for the, for the board's approval to see if they want to move forward with funding this, I will say this is not funded for this year, we did not put money for this year, so we'd have to find the money, he's asking for twenty thousand dollars per year moving forward from the city to help fund this position.
Now, are we, are we approving a budget item, are we asking for approval of budget item, or are we asking for this, to continue to consider this, this measure?
No, this is the first time it's come up to actually approve it, it's not, and it was not in the twenty twenty-five budget, so we're going to have to find the money in the budget this year to prove it by the board to move forward with it, if not.
Okay, so that, that approval could not, we're not, not asking for that approval for that expenditure tonight?
Well, no, I'm, it's up for the board to entertain the idea and what, what do they want to do moving forward.
Questions and comments?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple. So.
Mr. Ross, go ahead, please.
So, this year it would just be half of the twenty, so it would be ten.
That's correct.
Ah, now, as far as finding it in the budget, do you have, like, I mean, do we have money, you know? General revenue, do we have?
We could definitely pay for this using general revenue, sales tax funds.
Okay.
For, if I may, Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, please, Mayor.
For the benefit of those who are watching and listening, could we review what other stakeholders are contributing to this project in addition to the city so that people understand that it's not like, we're not just taking the whole responsibility? Who all involved in the community is contributing in some, some different ways towards this initiative?
Sure, I would, I would ask Mayor if it's okay if Mr. Titterton comes up and talks about that.
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Titterton, could you come, come forward and embellish this if you would, please, sir?
Yeah, so just a review from when I presented a month ago, Highland, Frisco Highlands new apartment units there, and so there's some money that was written into their program as part of their tax grants that they're getting that will also flow to this position as well, so those are kind of three main sources that we're looking at for funding this position.
And could you tell us, me, briefly, what this position will do?
Yeah, actually, I do have the job description back here, I can grab that.
No, it's actually, it's in the packet, it's in the packet.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, it's listed in the job description, but there's kind of two primary things that they're going to be working on, so one is, as part of our renovations that we're doing right now across the street, is the goal of creating a kind of one-stop shop for homelessness, so, which we kind of already have a lot of folks that have come by, it's actually our normal case manager, about half her time today was dealing with some cases of homelessness and housing, even though that's not her primary job, but to have a place where, you know, folks can grab a shower, get their mail, but then also connect with this individual, to connect with other local resources to understand, you know, how we can get them back on their feet, sometimes it might be health resources, addiction resources, housing resources, but having a place that can be kind of that hub for the different resources that exist in our community to connect people to, to hopefully get them out of homelessness, or for those that are maybe at risk of homelessness, prevent that from happening in the first place, so this position would oversee kind of that process there on our site, and then the other big piece would be working with, like, Frisco Highlands apartments that are coming online to, one, with all the residents, provide some services to them to make sure they stay safely housed, but they have also set aside six units that we'd have priority referrals to, that as we interact with people that maybe are in need of housing, that are a good fit for that, that we can quickly get them into housing over there as well, so that's kind of the two primary things, as well as just some general advocacy in the community around housing and homelessness.
Is there, do you have experience, or is there, is there good experience to see that these efforts have, have improved lives in, in communities?
Yeah, so, I think the biggest thing is when you're dealing with homelessness, for example, is every single case is different, and we have some folks that, you know, there's really not a lot that you can do for various reasons, but then other folks that, you know, sometimes they do already have income, it's just a matter of connecting to the right housing, there's other folks that, you know, maybe just need that assistance to get a job and then generate the income, actually recently we just had an individual, that was one of those individuals that did have income, but it just, it kind of fallen between the cracks and, you know, for him is trying to get into affordable housing, and so we were able to work with him and OKAC, connect him to OKAC as well, and here about two weeks, he was getting ready to move into a place, we had another individual a couple of years ago that, you know, she came into us, she was living in her vehicle, and we let her stay in our parking lot, and we were able to do some case management with her, and eventually she was able to get some income going and we were able to get her into housing, but, you know, it takes someone that has, is able to take that time, which is the goal of this position to have someone that, that is the sole thing that they're working on versus, you know, we've got people that work on other things and also have to add on this, because you can just, only if it's spend so much time, when that's not your primary job, trying to learn about the housing resources, learning about all the other options that exist, so this position is something that can focus specifically on just those resources, just those issues.
Questions for Mr. Titterton, go ahead, go ahead, please.
The other sources of funding that you mentioned, because I know you mentioned that you would like the city's investment to be an ongoing investment, are those other sources of income going to be recurring sources of income, or are they going to have a built-in termination date?
Yeah, so the Frisco Highlands one is a recurring one for several years, and then Torch, we'd be, we're currently in conversation with them to see if they can continue that for at least another year or so, but then, you know, our goal as an organization is always to be as self-funded as possible too, just because the nature of grants is they come and go, and we don't like, especially for staffing positions, like being too dependent on those sources of income, so.
We are familiar with that predicament.
Yeah.
Questions and comments, Mr. Sagaser.
Have you contacted the county, are they going to?
So, the county right now is helping support the recycling center, so they're putting in, I think, like thirty-five thousand dollars a year towards that effort, which incidentally will also kind of intersect with this a little bit, because one of the goals for us is to have a place where, you know, if we do interact with someone who is experiencing homelessness, we can plug them into, you know, baling and sorting of things in the recycling center, which we're already kind of doing, just begin with having this other position, we'll be able to do that even more effectively.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions and comments? If not, thank you, Mr. Titterton, very much. Are we then to bring the, the budgeting measure forward?
Yeah, we need, if more of the Aldermen wants to make a motion to fund that position.
I'll entertain a motion to.
I make a motion to approve ten K in funding this year and then, you know, look at, when budget time comes, look at putting the twenty thousand into the budget for next year.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Morris.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Ballard.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Sagaser.
Aye.
Neil.
Abstain.
Wilson.
Aye.
Is that seven? Okay, with a vote of seven ayes and one abstention, we have approved the ten thousand dollar budgeting item to go to community outreach ministries for a housing advocacy coordinator. Chief Watkins, come, explain our, our technology.
Hopefully it works.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Titterton.
Good evening, so I also have Kevin and Roger here, they're, they also help out with, with IT through many, their departments and just overall, so we went out to bid as per our last two years, or last ten years, we've done, we bid five years on, on annual IT bids, I went out to, again, sorry, went out to bid again this year, and I, and I think you have an updated list in the packet, there is, we did, I, we just missed that J-Mark did include, and I found this a couple of others places too, there's different sections of the bid that, that they have a built-in five percent increase per year, so if you figure that in, J-Mark was, you can see it, J-Mark's five seventy-three, three sixty-two, Pitt's five seventy-two, eight fifty, Consult Ad, which is out of, out of New York, is five eighty-five, those are the, those are the top ones, so the bids were, they were requested to go out to bid as device or user base, be, just be, try to keep it as, as comparative as possible, so we can, as much as we could compare apples to apples, so Pitt and Sumner One, all, both bid in, in a base fee with, with a Pitt at fifty hours, and then. Softsages was forty hours, and then Sumner One bid at twenty hours, so though, it's hard to compare those bulk hour groups based, so I, so that's why we marked.
I get lost in all this, and, you know, we've sat in conversations with it, I'm, the difference between those hours, I'm, I'm still not clear what the, what those hours mean.
So, we've, hours, ticket hours, how much time spent on our account, so I have this, I pulled this today, well, I actually got it yesterday, from J-Mark, take one at four, so, so, you know, I can share, basically pulled the data from the past year of, of times J-Mark has spent, hit the blue boxes, is hours spent on our account, so if, if we go with a, like, J-Mark or PCNet or Dazzy, they include base, it's how many people or how many computers we have, it's not based on hours, Pitt Technology bid as, we will give you the first fifty hours, and then anything past that will charge you at ninety-five dollars an hour, so it could, some months, it can vary, and if you look at the monthly charts, that, that varies, if you, if you kind of see the February, March, April, why those shot up, is we did the Windows upgrade and they provided that as a service, so that spent, I think, I saw eighty hours total on that project on just that one ticket, and I don't know how that spread out per month, to give you an example, on our Windows, our Microsoft Office and email upgrade, the quote that you guys had approved, that we spent twenty-eight thousand for, they quoted a hundred and thirty hours as, well, it's closed out now, they actually spent a hundred and seventy hours, so quotes can be good or bad, you, there's, there's, there's fluff, some, some room, I mean, they take a guess based on their, their knowledge, it could hurt us, could help, could help us, it could hurt them, could help them, so trying to get the, everything in the, that's why we did the either devices or users, as you can see, those are the, the bids we got, J-Mark is our current provider, we've been with them since twenty, I think, twenty twelve, so I have data, breakdowns, I know there was a question about what we've spent this year with J-Mark and that doesn't add, didn't add up with our monthly fees, I have that broken down to, to backups, we've spent eleven thousand, I'm just rounding, security, we spent sixteen thousand, office licenses, we spent three thousand, and then hardware projects, computers, and then the, I apologize, and then computers and the office upgrade came out to fifty-eight thousand dollars, so that's a chunk of that money, so when we say we spent money with J-Mark, it's been multiple things, not just the service fee, so, and I have that broken down if you want to see that, like I said, I have Kevin and Roger here both to help us out, there's also, we have to be looked at, security features, security access, one of the things, the Softsages, I will note that they stated in their bid that they have a office in Missouri, and we Googled it, and I, I can't find anything, they gave the, the address and you Google map it, and it's just a blank storefront in the town, so I don't feel confident proposing that one to you all, if it's the Softsages, so that's why that one was not suggested, and so with, with the current knowledge base, mules history, network knowledge, the four of us, John Kendall was not here to sign it, but the four of us recommend going with J-Mark as our IT provider, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
You have on your list here, it says meet specs, yes and no, can you kind of go over what the specs were, of what you guys were looking for?
So, so, I mean, most of these were, they met the specs of they had experience, it was a request or proposal, but really it was that they, they bid like we ask.
Right, the per device or?
Per device, per user, so we're trying to, again, trying to compare as best as we could, and it's hard, because we're not really comparing lawn mowers, we're comparing a service, and so that's what makes this much harder, so we asked for either devices or users, and so that's, on those, that's why we did not meet specs, because that's what we asked folks to ask, so we could compare and give you guys as much of apples to apples as possible.
So, question I have is, you know, like Pitt Technology, and you said, was it Sumner One that did hourly instead of?
The ones that did hourly were Pitt, Softsages and Sumner One.
Okay, and, and so, like, for example, you know, I'll just use J-Mark as an example, since that's who we currently use, they bid per device.
Correct, they, they did both, but they, they calculated to the same rate.
Okay, so, so per device, what's the cost that they bid us per device?
So, different devices cost differently. Do you have that bid that you can look up? Hey, it was. J-Mark, yeah, on the, on the by, device quote. Come on up, man.
So, while he's doing that, a question, in, in just a thought I had, and, you know, there's, there's three bids that are, you know, relatively local, relatively close, and, you know, one's by device, one's, you know, by, by hour, I don't know, you know, PCNet, you said, you know, needs cyber shield level, like, if, I would like to propose maybe moving forward with those three and maybe having a representative from each of those companies coming and like explaining, because it's not apples, you know, to app, like, like, you know, you said that Pitt did, you know, hourly, and they say, well, you know, we may not do per device, we may do per hourly, and it breaks down to this, and, and I would just like to hear maybe from some, like, narrow it down to three and then extend that invitation and let them, you know, answer all the questions we have, because I know we've had extensive talks, you know, the last, the last two days, you know, about this, and, and, you know, there are things that, and, and I know when you're trying to get a bid and you're trying to make apples to apples and, you know, going with, well, you know, J-Mark does eighty hours this month, and, you know, like this, they did sixty, is that saying that the, the company that's bidding per hour, they're going to have the exact same hours, the exact same thing, do they take, treat tickets the same way, and so when we put their per hour, you know, cost in with J-Mark's per hour, we kind of get it diluted, and I would like to actually, you know, have them come in and say, hey, when we get a ticket for this, this is what we're looking at doing, this is what we're doing, you know, hey, we've got two people working, so that two hours may only be an hour, but, you know, and we only bill you for one hour even though it's two people, you know, things along that as opposed to, you know, just, hey, this is per hour, this is how many hours we have, I would like to maybe ask some in-depth questions if those, if we narrow it down to one, two or three companies maybe have.
So, I would, I would say too, I did, again, I've reviewed these and they're fifty to, thirty to fifty pages, and so, I apologize, but I did PCNet, I did also say it has a built-in five percent increase also, so their five-year total of the basic service is six sixty-three, four oh seven.
Okay. So, that, that would be my train of thought, and I would love to, you know, maybe have a representative from each of those come in, answer the questions, break it down for us, and, and, but again, that's just me, so I, I've opened, if anybody else thinks that's a good idea or a bad idea.
Comments? Okay, good.
I think that's an excellent idea, I would like to be able, because the, we can't compare apples to apples, and I don't think a business should be punished for having a different business model than what we're expecting, because we're going to use the one business model, and, you know, we can't expect other businesses to have that same business model, so I'm just looking at the top three come in and present the idea. Which three, just to make sure, so Dusty, were you saying J-Mark, Pitt and PCNet, were those the top three you were thinking, or just the three lowest prices?
I think those are, you know, in my opinion, they're, you know, they're all local and, you know, relatively close to, you know, competitive, when you look at the per year, there's probably, you know, fifteen thousand dollar difference between one, two and three, so that's, that was my thought process behind it.
Chief, what is your feeling about that?
It's up to you guys.
The PCNet one, not equivalent, need the cyber shield level, is that just an outlier that, is that something they can upgrade and get?
So, that is upgrading, I don't, I didn't quote the price on that, so looking at their bid, they have different say, say, or levels, and the current, one that they proposed was thirty dollars per device, I, they did not list what, looking at what our current base package provides, we will need to go to the next level, and I don't have that price, so they're going to be.
Higher.
Much higher, yeah, yeah.
What would be the consequences, both procedurally and cost-wise, of going with a company other than J-Mark, what kind of, of transition would, would take place?
So, it's, it's going to take a lot of just security features, vetting, there's, to touch every computer, have to, have to transition that, PD is its own different world, security that they have to meet with, with. Uh, PD is its own different world of security that they have to meet with, with, and rules. Getting them cleared through Mules, Roger can speak more on that. Um, it's, it's, it's a lot of, of front labor process on our side, providing them the information, the network, the layout, stuff like that.
So it, it is a considerable effort, uh, and, and hours spent of, of hours that would be necessary if we would go for a, a provider other than J Mark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, do we want to embellish, uh, that at all?
Uh, just from the.
We have to step, step forward here, would you please?
Just from the police department's perspective, we, we have to follow a whole nother set of rules than most any other company would. And that's the criminal justice information system rules. So anybody that has access to our system has to have background check done by fingerprints and those results have to be on file with Missouri State Highway Patrol. We would also have to resend in network map, which means they would have to give us a whole networking map. And depending on how they operate, that could be a substantial change, it could be nothing. We, we wouldn't know unless we switch and I find out more about how they actually run business.
So a question I have, is that a question we could ask, say, Pitt or PC Net if they come in and say, if you've done that? So, you know, it's one of those, if we actually go that route and bring a rep in from each of those?
Sure we can.
Okay, so.
Absolutely.
So we would know that before we just randomly selected somebody and said, oh, let's find out what happens after we pick the, you know, like, hopefully, we would have a conversation, you guys would say, or you would be at the meeting and you would say, hey, the PD needs to have this, 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 and this, and if one of the companies are like, hey, we can't do that, well, that should make it an easy decision.
Based off my memory, and this was a month or two ago, when they came on site to, to visit, we did ask those questions.
Okay.
What I don't recall is if Pitt actually said they have experience working with law enforcement agencies. I know they work with some cities in, in the nearby, but I don't know if they actually handle the police department somewhat or they're doing just general city IT.
So there, there's a lot more behind the scenes than numbers?
Yes.
I would say so.
Yes.
Looking at even J Mark's bid, it is very specific. I mean, it is a complete roadmap of in twenty twenty-six, you will replace this many computers and you will upgrade your Cisco license, yeah, I don't know, it is a whole list of what we will do in five years. I don't know if Pitt or these other companies had that know-how or maybe that was part of them coming on site, was them discovering, I guess?
Yeah, we, we offered, we, I, I had, we had two different tour dates to bring every company in to do tours of this, the hardware. Plus some of the companies we did, they'd sent, uh, exhausting, um, questionnaires.
Exhaustive, I think is the one.
Sorry, exhaust, it was exhausting, it's still, I'm still exhausting from it. Um, e- uh, questions of how many switches we have, how many ports, how many, I mean, all, all the stuff, um, that, uh, computers.
Nerdy stuff.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that, there's some stuff that I was like, I don't, I even had to ask J Mark, but how many devices we have? How many users, how many active domain accounts, how many email accounts, what are, so, two factor security accounts? So, um, we were open, we went through Paula, asked everything, we're open. So they, everybody had a chance to, to ask any questions, to find out the information and we tried to be fair to everybody, so.
So if we brought these, uh, if we brought these representatives into, for these different companies, uh, how would they explain themselves in regard to, uh, the complexities that, I mean, standing here? Uh, I mean, would we, would we need to get in a bus and go to, uh, all the, all the different places that have all the different computers and, uh, and have them explain that? I mean, can, can the complexity of that explanation be made here?
Yes. Yes, it can absolutely be made here. Um, it's more of, of depending who they send, of the knowledge base of their systems and processes and features. That would be based on who they, like I said, who they send.
Mr. Morris, you are more, uh, familiar with this process than anyone. Uh, what is your perspective on, on a, a process like this?
Yeah, um, I mean, it sounds like we've done it right in the sense of invited them in and we did, uh, kind of discovery calls with all of the companies. Um, I don't know what questions we're wanting to ask necessarily. Um, I can tell you from my standpoint, uh, um, again, also, we got to remember that this is just covering general IT supports. Um, it does not have anything to do with special projects or any other, um, anything new that we want. Um, that is all separate, this is just for.
With the exception of Pitt, because Pitt, they're based on an hourly rate per month and whatever you don't use in one month can roll over to the following month, which can accrue and get used towards special projects.
Which could be great, and I didn't look at that, I guess, to that far, but, um, and if they keep one rate the entire time, I mean, maybe, I mean, I think this is fruitful, what we're doing and trying to make sure that we get a competitive bid on this stuff. Uh, um, I don't know. I'm, it's, I'm kind of cautious on moving IT vendors just because, uh, it is a big undertaking. And, uh, granted, they will do most of the work, I guess, but, uh, it will be very disruptive to everyone in the city.
John, in your opinion? What would a competitor have to do to, uh, be, uh, com- be compelling enough for us to move vendors?
Do everything does, J Mark does, but cheaper?
No, I think, I think, well, yeah.
I mean, financially, um, I mean, I think all, the ones I personally know, J Mark, Pitt, I've dealt with Sumner One and some with PC Net.
I mean, the good of these companies right here is that they come with an entire team of IT, um, I'll say, experts in different areas. That's the hard part with IT is that there are so many different areas that, um, are covered in just supporting a city like Bolivar. And, uh, um, you need all those at certain times and, uh, that, that's where the good comes from that. But, uh, financially, yeah, would be a big thing. I assume most of these are pretty competent, um, or about at the same level as far as their competency goes with IT. Um, uh, J Mark does great work, I've, I've dealt with them for a while and, uh, they have a good presence, uh, in the community and surrounding areas. Um, and they are coming in as a lower bidder on here, so, uh, which makes it seem easier. But I do agree, it would be great that if we, for special projects, um, uh, it would be great if you could build into the contracts and if we, if we sign this, I mean, giving them almost, or giving them over half a million dollars, it is, it would be great to be able to lock in like a special projects rate or something that was, uh, um, I guess, a little more palatable for some. I guess we're going to have to upgrade servers or we're going to have to upgrade our operating systems. This is our bargaining time to figure out a, a rate. I don't know what rate is today for those projects, but, um, I think you could potentially bundle it, bundle it into something like this.
So saying having somebody from each company coming in and asking those questions and proposing that idea, you may be able to bundle a rate into that as opposed to just accepting something right now?
Um, I don't know how much we would get out of it in a setting like this.
Right.
I would think them coming and.
Contract negotiations really, so that's not going, they're not going to lay their cards out of what they can or cannot do.
And it fits the whole purpose of the closed bid process, because if they're all talking to each other.
For, for staff, um, completely understand that they, that like piece, or Pitt had a fifty, fifty hours built in. But looking at our history, we've never averaged just fifty hours in the past, past year. And so even you taking that Windows project out to say that we're going to be under any month and have that roll over, we didn't feel comfortable with that as a budgeting mechanism of saying, we're going to hit that, we're going to have hours to spare.
Alderman Rains?
Um, well, I do, uh, as Alderman Ross did, did mention that hours at J Mark may not be the same as hours at other companies. But I do feel that it, it needs to be noted that the Pitt bid on this sheet that you provided is not accurate to the bid that they actually gave us. You, you gave the number of one hundred sixteen thousand eight fifty, Pitt bid us at seven, fifty-seven thousand dollars. And I know that's based on the fifty hours a month, but I feel that that needs to be reflected and noted so that we're, we're talking about, I, I think it is worth our time to have them come in and say, we think we can help you at X amount of hours instead of, because, I mean, fifty-seven thousand versus a hundred and sixteen thousand, there, that's a lot of money.
So we bid them at the hours that historically we have used.
Right, based on J Mark's work, not based on what Pitt's work is capable of doing.
Right, I.
But how do you quantify that? How do we know?
Well, I don't, I, I don't, we don't, but at the same time.
Think we can know, is what I'm, what I'm saying.
But I think it's worth our time and Pitt's time to come in and help us understand because I know other cities that they work for, that are bigger than us, that are rolling over minutes at the fifty hours a month, where they're also helping with law enforcement.
How would this process take place? If we were to move forward as we, as suggested to have these, uh, representatives here?
I guess we can bring it, ask, ask that they come into the next board meeting. And maybe.
Yeah, Mr. Relford.
And maybe we could, uh, the staff could work with, uh, Alderman Morris and put together a list of questions, um, for the representatives?
Would that be, uh, would that be a, a, a good approach that everyone would be comfortable with? I mean, who would know more?
I would, I would like to add Alderman Rains also to that.
Oh, thank you for that. One thing I think could be helpful also as part of that, I know you said in making the determination whether to switch providers, you're looking at financial savings, but obviously you were talking about the costs that are attendant upon making that transition. So, you know, a slight savings, you're probably not going to want to undertake those transaction costs of, of all of that. So if there are other factors that you look at in order to really make sure that the total cost of that transition is taken into account, like how much savings you typically want to see or just what, what you would look like if you were, if you were making that decision, you know, how, how you would weigh that? Because it's not just a matter of, well, this one's a dollar cheaper, so let's save the dollar and incur however many hundreds of staff hours and whatever other disruptions to save the dollar.
Burden on the staff, I think surely should be a, a, an important, a very important aspect to the further consideration. I mean, uh, we've, I've attended, uh, a number of meetings where, uh, the chief has expounded, uh, on and on about the process and it is extremely laborious. And I think we need to keep in mind, i- if, if we do, uh, bring these different representatives in, that, uh, switching, switching providers is a, a gigantic undertaking. Uh, and, uh, it is, is, is burdensome, to say the least, on the staff. So, uh, bear that in mind, please. So, uh, how should we proceed from here?
I, I think we just, would we call the, the three, um, providers that we've discussed, invite them to the regular session?
I mean, is that, is, I mean, as far as emotion, emotion for the board, is that just kind of a sense of the board? Or, uh, um, and instruction to, uh, to the staff?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, uh, Don, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so I think we understand what's being asked of us.
Okay.
I guess one last side.
Yes, yes, Mr. 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 Moore.
And I'm fine either way, but would you rather it be in this setting in front of the entire board? Or would you rather it be to Alderman and it's a, just a special council almost and then we report back?
Uh, I, I've, I don't know if I have the power to suggest that, but I think the two of you would be wonderful representatives and be able to, uh, to burrow into this, uh, uh,
And report back.
With, with great expertise.
The work and just let us know.
Personally, I would prefer it be in front of the board because I want everyone to be as educated and knowledgeable as they can be because this is a big decision.
All right, well, I suppose that's, that's true, but the two of you can probably take the lead, uh, on it as far as your understanding of it, uh, the depth of questioning. Uh, I guess the rest of us can be, uh, uh, witness and, uh, kind of sideline participants. But, uh, asking, uh, the two of you to be kind of a unofficial committee of two, uh, that will kind of lead the way through this? I- is that, uh, i- is that the consensus of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just had a thought. If we're talking about like getting a question, question list together, what about getting that question list and maybe send them to those three companies, um, as I have a, kind of a?
Heads up.
Heads up prep, that they could even give us some, maybe some t- some answers that we could then send out to the board before that time and then kind of, then we could have any follow-up. Um, I'm just thinking of, of.
Could, uh?
I don't know how many questions we're talking about, but like, you know what I'm saying, like, a secondary s- review questionnaire.
Could Alderman Rains and, uh, Alderman Morris, uh, uh, get with you privately?
Yeah.
And, uh, work out, uh, the questions? Would that, uh, would that be acceptable to the rest of the board?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
And if, if we don't get them back before the meeting, we will hand them out, I mean, we'll be fair, hand them out all at the same time. But that, my goal would be to get them before and then hand them out because that could affect some of the decisions about contract, etc., except that we're talking about. So it could be discussed more, more knowledgeable for the, for the whole board, whoever we go with.
When is our contract date?
Uh, November first is, is, well, expires October thirty.
We're not, we're not under the gun by any means, are we? O- okay, well, then, uh, uh, Chief, uh, will you be in charge of making those arrangements with the, with the, uh, expert Alderman?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, yes, go ahead, ma'am.
The timeframe is so long before the contract renewal, there's really no hurry to have them here in two weeks, is there?
So depending on the vendor, some of them are four to six months onboarding.
Yeah.
So it's, 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 by the time we do.
We want them ready to go in November.
If you back from, from October, that's, that's middle of September, the con- contract, we do, they come in July or in, in August, they might start working in first September to be ready to go November one. Because there's a lot of backend stuff and, and processes and updating and security things that will have to happen. So we're kind of, we're there, we need to not, not wait.
Okay, guess that answers that, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, uh, I guess we're going to remodel the, uh, the place around here. There's parts of it that, uh, uh, aren't used and parts of it that, uh, need to be used differently. Uh, who is here to explain the, uh?
Kyle and I will, 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 will tackle this one. So, um, we have some drawings in here, so this is the, the remodel of the, we can put them up there on the board, remodeling the, the front office. And this is where, you know, as you walk in the door here on the, on the west side, as you go into the right. So we have two pages here of kind of schematics of what we're looking at doing. So essentially, you know, you walk in now and you got that open area to the large desk. We're going to make it like a, a smaller area as you walk in with the glass and everything. And then, uh, we will have some, a couple desks back there for our two, um, our two customer service reps, accounts payable and, uh, the folks to take care of all the inquiries up there. And then we'll have a separate office in the back for Paula, for the city clerk.
So, so the off, the, the area out here will actually kind of resume its original, uh, purpose as sort of the, the actual front door of, of the, of City Hall?
Well, we're not changing the front door, the, the door.
Not the front door itself, but I mean, but the area out here, uh, was.
Well, it's not this area, it's, 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 you know where, you know where Tracy?
Yeah, right.
Sits right now, that area.
Okay, that's the only area that's, that's the only area that's going to be affected.
That's right.
Okay, not out here at all.
No, no, negative, no, look at, look at the, the drawings here.
The drawings didn't make sense to me and so.
Yeah, me too.
Getting that cleared out, yes.
Uh, okay, well, maybe get to the drawings, we can try to explain a little bit better.
Well, when I thought, well, I was initially thinking it was this space, this is the lobby to me.
No, this is the, you, so you know when you come in, you talk to Tracy or Paula, it's that area.
Makes it, perfect sense now.
Yep, my apologies, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
Want to go back there?
No.
Yeah, all right.
So a- as you walk in, y- you know, it's, it's basically, you're going to have a smaller area where we, uh, you know, tend to our cu- our customers.
Okay.
And they're going to have a, you know, you see back here is an open area with, uh, two desks. And then, um, we're going to have an office in the back.
So the back door will continue to be kind of the front door?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, so, um, we're going to do this in-house. Um, so Kyle and his team have, have put together a budget for it and, um, it's going to cost a little less than ten thousand dollars to do that and it would be a nice addition to the office.
Okay, do we need to take any action or just say?
Uh, Don, what do you think, uh, for this, just a motion to move forward or?
And to move forward, I mean, it looks like, if I'm mistaken, the total cost will be under ten thousand, but, um, uh, it, a motion.
And to move forward, I mean, it looks like, if I'm mistaken, the total cost will be under ten thousand, but, um, uh, it, a motion wouldn't do any harm, basically.
So, move.
Okay, I entertain a motion for, and Mr. Sagaster has, okay, and a, and a second. Uh, is that a vote, voi- vote, voice, vote? Uh, counselor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, no. The ayes have it, we have made a motion to move forward with the, uh, remodeling of the city hall.
Will that come out of general?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, and we have some insurance money too, what's, we'll be able to cover this cost.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, please, ma'am.
Um, Thomas, it looks like, and if I'm understanding these plans correctly, which I already have done wrong once, so I might still be wrong. Um, the, the waiting area, or the, the interaction with the public area, there's no seating involved. I have no concept of whether the seating that is currently provided is ever used, but I assume that the fact that seating has been removed from that customer waiting area means that we don't feel that there's a need for seating, because there's never like enough of a queue for somebody nee- to need a place to rest.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments, or have we already bypassed that? There we go, okay. We have, uh, we have acted. Uh, okay, uh, moving on to item number five, employee manual policy updates for, uh, one, number one zero nine, uh, Mr. Relford.
Yes, these, uh, some slight changes to our employee manual, we, we've talked about this in the past, and we, we brought up the idea of providing, um, benefits to the mayor and Aldermen, um, and also our part-time employees. Um, the same thing that our full-time employees get right now, that's, uh, admission to the rec center for the employee, um, the Aqua Zone, and half price at the golf course. So this is just formalizing, uh, what we've talked about in the past, so this updates the po- the, the employee manual policy, and then following this, we'll have the ordinance that, that, um, formalizes it.
Questions, so we need just action to move forward, and we'll have a, an ordinance, uh, to, uh, to pass later on, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Questions and comments, Mr., uh, uh, go ahead, please.
Don?
We talked about this a couple years back, and you said that because we're elected, we'd have to pay taxes on, this would be taxed, is that still the ruling?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a monetary benefit, so it would be reportable and taxable, which is why it was the, that's why if you, you will see, it says if elected by such individual, that gives you guys the choice to elect it or not. It doesn't force you to take it, cause it could
Correct.
You to take it, maybe a tax burden that you might not want.
Is it taxable for all employees, or just for elected employees?
Um, I would say all employees.
Okay, I wondered about that, if it was part of, um, yeah, if it was part of taxable income for the, for the other employees as well.
And it's a, it's a benefit that they get for working here that, that has value, so it's, would be in the definition of income.
Further questions and comments?
And this doesn't tech- affect right now, cause I think we've talked about that too.
Uh, I say that again, please, sir.
It, it doesn't like, you don't automatically get this benefit starting today.
It's after, after
That's correct.
the April elections, is that when it would, uh?
For those who are elected in April, it would be.
That's right.
Each, each individual has to be elected
Yes.
before they can take advantage of it.
Yes, okay.
So, some people would be eligible in April.
After, after passage of the ordinance, it would, uh, it would only go into effect after they're following their reelection.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
Uh, uh, do we need a motion to move forward, or is that just a sense of the?
Yes.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion, a motion to move forward to the, uh, updating of the employee manual policy updates.
I move, we proceed with, uh, updating the employee manual policy according to staff.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, uh, uh, is that a vo- vo- voice, a vote, counselor?
It can be.
Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we have asked the, uh, uh, the staff to move forward on the updating of the employee. Okay, I, uh, am entertaining a motion for the adoption of bill number, uh, twenty twenty-five thirty-nine.
First reading, second.
Okay, uh, counselor?
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, ordinance number forty sixty-one, an ordinance amending the ball of municipal code by amending section one one five point zero six zero to provide for option for employees and elected officials to receive membership at recreational center and pool and golf membership at a reduced rate as part of compensation.
All right, uh, I guess we have had, uh, uh, we have had the questions and comments, so, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, please call, oh, no, I see, we need a, uh, entertaining a motion for a second reading.
Second reading.
Second.
Um, counselor?
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, ordinance number forty sixty-one, an ordinance amending the ball of municipal code by amending section one one five point zero six zero to provide for option for employees and elected officials to receive membership at recreational center and pool and golf membership at reduced rate as part of compensation.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Wilson?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Rains?
Aye.
Sagaster?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Ballard?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Horace?
Aye.
By a vote of eight ayes and zero noes, we have approved bill number twenty twenty-five thirty-nine. Uh, I'm, uh, entertaining a motion for the adoption of bill number twenty twenty-five forty.
First reading.
Second.
Uh, counselor?
This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty, ordinance number forty sixty-two, an ordinance amending the ball of municipal code by amending section two ten point one zero zero to provide for succession of authority to declare emergency within the city.
Uh, questions and comments, Mr. Relford?
We're gonna have, uh, Chief Watkins, he's gonna put on his third hat as emergency manager and talk about this.
Okay. Come ahead, please, sir.
So this is hopefully something we will never use, but it's just to formalize a chain of succession for the chief elected official, um, in emergency, the chief elected official can declare emergency and make other calls, and right, we only had the mayor and the president of the board. So, worst case scenario, this gives us nine layers.
According, according to the code, there is a, a third and fourth, uh, uh, paragraph in that, but it, it's non-specific. It's that, uh, uh, someone else may, uh, assume that role, uh, if the, uh, the first two in succession do not want it, but it requires a vote, it requires action from the board, so you're saying that this would just be, uh, getting in to code the, uh, the succession without having to go through a, a, a process.
So when we're having a bad day, we, it's already laid out.
Right. I, I have a question.
Go ahead, please, ma'am. Yes.
On behalf of the city collector, um, I, I feel that he might want to know, is there, is there ever a circumstance where the city collector, who is also technically elected, uh, would be called upon to be
Got more votes than anyone.
to be in that line, he got more votes than anybody's gotten, he's the top vote getter in the city, um, uh, where that would be anywhere in the line of succession as the city collector, or no? I don't see
I think, I think as proposed, uh, it, it's not.
Yeah, cause it's not the governing board, it's just an elected official of the city, so. If, if, if we
Change that.
And we, we, yeah, but I mean, if we're down that many levels
That's right.
we are
When we're out of Alderman
I'm probably retiring at that moment, walking away.
Okay.
And I don't care.
Again, the, uh, the, the, uh, the succession is, uh, length of service on the, the, uh, the board of Aldermen, is that, am I?
So, like, like, again, last year, we had times where both, uh, Mayor Warwick and, and Justin were, Alderman Ballard, sorry, were both out of town at the same time. Yes, Alderman Neil. So, so just, so if, you know, a week, holiday weekend, or, or, I guess, so that's just, it's just putting in code just to have that, that, uh,
Formalization.
formalized plan, yeah.
Well, now, now, uh, how specific is, I, I haven't, I, I actually haven't read beyond that, how specific is this? I mean, how would we know who the next in succession is going to be, it, uh, it, uh, it can't be named in the, uh,
It's, it's per current board, so it'll change
Yeah, but who
each year on April.
Who knows?
Paula.
So Paula will actually, uh, she will be the one who, uh, Madam Clerk will be the one that actually tells who's gonna be in charge.
Yikes.
It, I mean, I'm serious, and, uh, is that, does that not need to be written into the code, I mean, to, to, uh, uh, if we're goi- if
Cause we have to change that every year, so if we just do by elected, longest elected date.
No, no, but I'm saying, in the process, I mean, could it, does it need to be, uh, uh, doesn't, does wording need to be put into, into this ordinance? That the, uh, um, the, uh, the longest, the d- determining, the longest-serving Alderman w- will be, uh, determined, or be spoken of, or, or be revealed by the, uh, this city clerk? I mean, is, I'm serious, I mean
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, there's gonna be minutes, there's going to be election certification records, so there's, there's no reason to designate a certain person to do that, it'll be open record for anybody that's still alive and go to
Yeah, but don't, someone actually need to do it, I mean, i- if we have an emergency and, uh, uh, the, uh, Justin and I have dropped dead and, uh, we, uh, we need some, no, I'm, I'm, I, 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 I'm serious here.
Then it would go to Alderman Sagaster, then Alderman Neil, then myself, then, uh, either Alderman Rains or Wilson, then Alderman Moore, then Alderman Price.
What, what, what process would we go through to be sure that, that was, now, I, I'm kinda, I, I'm kind of, uh, I'm kinda
Contact, I mean, if, if
Going, I'm going on my experience, my past experience, knowing we're in the words business, and words matter everything, and if you, if you make assumptions, uh, going into the, uh, lawmaking process that, uh, turn out later to be not very clear, uh, it, it causes problems, and they, so, I, I'm, I, I'm, I'm not really joking here, that it seems like we need to, we need to, we need to say
I, I guess the question I have is, I, I'm not following, because longest-serving member on the board, you know, so it goes to the mayor, the, the board president, which we all vote for, we all know who that is.
Right, yes.
And then, uh, well, actually goes mayor, city administrator, then the board president, uh, and if he's also absent, then the board of Alder member with the greatest seniority present, so like
His objective fact.
Yeah, that, like, there's no, like, 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 there's no, like, oh, I don't know who
Judgment call, yeah.
We know that Sags was elected before Ashley and Alexis, and me, and Brian, and Trish, and John. If Sags isn't here, we know that Alexis was elected before me, and Ashley, and Brian, and John, and Tr- if Alexis, and, and so, the, the next, the, the most ranking senior member is, it's implied by who that person is. And now, for example, we could have an election next year and have four new Aldermen, we could have an election the year after and have four new Aldermen after that, so then it would go to one of the ones who was elected two years before, you know? If we attach a name to it
No, we can't, we cannot, we cannot, no, 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 you can't
You have to attach the position, and the position of the most senior ranking Alderman is, it, it, you know, I don't know how much more
It, it probably
clarity you, you can get.
My, my concern is probably much ado about nothing, because it will probably be obvious and agreed to. I just say I'm, I'm, uh, uh, taking my last experience, knowing that being very clear, very clear, and very specific is, is very, very important when you write these things.
So I guess, I'm not fol- how is it not specific, saying the most senior elected?
It probably is.
Okay.
It probably is, but I'm just, just saying that it seems to me like, it's a, that, uh, well, did, uh, it, there need, there, it seems to me there ought to be a clear process of, of, of determining who, who it is, even though, eh, say, well, we'll just, we'll just agree, that's probably good enough.
It's not, well, but it's not we'll agree, it's, it would be designating a person to go find objective facts that exist and could be found by any person.
That's fine.
And if you pick a person, then if you're talking about a situation where tons of people are unavailable, I don't wanna designate a person, and if that person's not available, then the process
That's a valid point.
So I would, I would say that, that, like Don said, we have, we have lots and lots of records, whoever's around to consult the records, if people can't remember who was elected first, then, that's, that's objective facts, that's, that's the concrete foundation that we're building off of, we don't need to have an arbiter of that, because it's just objective fact that's findable, so I think, I think
I think that's, I think that's fair enough, I think that's fair enough, I just wanted to be sure that, uh, if the worst ha- did happen, we'd be sitting around sucking our thumbs and, and arguing over, uh, which month who determining, who was gonna determine what was gonna step forward.
So. Second reading?
Second.
Uh. Counselor?
Okay. This is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty, ordinance number forty sixty-two, an ordinance amending the ball of municipal code by amending section two ten point one zero zero to provide for succession of authority to declare emergency within the city.
Okay. I am entertaining a motion for the adopt, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, uh, Madam Clerk.
Sagaster?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Rains? Aye.
Ballard?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
With a vote of, uh, eight ayes and zero noes, we have adopted bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty. I'm entertaining a motion for the adoption of twenty twenty-five dash forty-one.
First reading.
Second.
Uh, counselor?
Bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, ordinance number forty sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city's renewal of insurance through Travelers and Chubb Insurance with Allos Acres Arnie Insurance and Business Advisors.
Uh, uh, comments and questions?
So, so I, I got
Mr. Ross?
Uh, I met with, with Paul, uh, today, cause, you know, of course, I had concerns of, could we potentially look at, uh, you know, self-insured on the workers' comp with our premiums going up to five hundred thousand? Uh, you know, after talking with him, the state has some guidelines, you know, realistically, the cost difference probably, the costs that we could potentially save for the costs that we could potentially have to, you know, be in, in, encumbrance on us for that, didn't really make sense. So, you know, it's just something that I wanted to explore, because, you know, obviously half a million dollars for a premium is, you know, is a lot, so I appreciate him taking the time to explain that to me, and just, you know, to put it in perspective, the cost that we would have to, you know, kinda have for ourselves is, would probably be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, you know, anything over a hundred and fifty thousand in, in claims would, we would be paying out of pocket more than what we're paying now, so I, I think that after that conversation, it makes sense to probably go ahead, and unfortunately, as, as much as it pains me to do so, you know, say that, yeah, you know, it's probably the right direction to go.
Thanks for following
And comments?
Thank you for following up on that.
Welcome.
And for bringing the idea, I mean, we can't, we can't consider the idea if we're not, right, exploring options, so, thank you for bringing it up as a possibility and for following through.
Questions and comments?
So are you making the motion?
Well, it would be, just be second reading.
Second.
Second.
Entertaining a motion for a second reading.
We did.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
No, we gotta actually
Second reading.
Read the second reading.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Uh, counselor?
Yes, sir, uh, this is bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, ordinance number forty sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing the city's renewal of insurance through Travelers and Chubb Insurance with Allos Acres Arnie Insurance and Business Advisors.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ballard?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Aye.
Rains?
Aye.
By a vote of eight ayes and zero noes, we have adopted bill number, uh, twenty twenty-five forty-one. I'm entertaining a motion for the adoption of bill number twenty twenty-five forty-two.
First reading.
Second.
Counselor?
Bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-two, ordinance number forty sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with Central Square for updated server and data migration for the city's police department.
Chief Watkins, or a, uh, representative of the?
Sorry for the urgency on this, um, this was originally planned to be a capital improvement item for next budget year. With Central Dispatch moving facilities, they had originally not planned on upgrading their servers, then we're found out, guess what, we're upgrading our servers. Um, that being the case, there, there's actually three components to this system, there's a CAD server, a mobile server, and an RMS server, and all three of those have to work on the same SQL version. All three of which right now are currently outdated, and they're on borrowed time. So, knowing that they are moving forward with their eighty thousand So knowing that they are moving forward with their eighty thousand plus dollar server upgrade, we're kind of forced to. We'd explored the idea of, of just getting a new physical server like we have now, and they quoted us in the neighborhood of about fifty thousand dollars. So we looked at that and had the same expression you all have, and we came up with another way. And that's by utilizing our old exchange server, repurposing that for our records management server. And then all we have to do is have the data that we currently have re-hosted on the current, or on this exchange server. So what we were able to find is about that eight thousand one hundred ninety dollar bill to migrate the data over, make sure everything's in the way, the way it's supposed to. And then roughly about the same cost, somewhere about that eight thousand for J-Mark to get everything spun up and ready to go and make sure that our connections with dispatcher are in place. The, the problem we had is that if we didn't get something decided soon, we wouldn't be able to be on the schedule when dispatch moves in mid-August. So we come before you with a solution to a problem.
A good solution.
Yes. So I've.
Now, Alderman Moores, do you, uh, we're turning to you.
Let me give all IT needs right here. Um, well, I guess my, one concern with the, uh, the old server and, I mean, how much useful life it has in it. I mean, I'm fine if this, I get it if it gets you by a year, um, at a minimum, that's always a gain, but.
With this upgrade, um, what it's gonna do is it's gonna bring us up to the most current SQL version. So the hardware itself, we're assured will be fine, it's got enough storage. We upgrade the SQL server version and we should be good for probably the next three or four years.
But after that three or four years.
We're moving the server to one of our hosted servers.
Right, we're, we're bringing it here.
Locally.
Yeah, currently it's being housed off-site, uh, at Central Dispatch.
Is it any, I guess there's probably no concerns there. I assume it's all them connecting just back to here now, to a different spot and.
We're working on that, another, another, yeah, that's another thing we're working on.
Okay.
Uh, other connect, because it's a new connection to ju, to dispatch, where luckily they get fiber now, so we're making a fiber VPN tunnel from here to dispatch, which should help their, their, uh, MDT speed greatly, we're hoping greatly increase.
Does anyone else have any idea what to ask?
Second reading.
That's a board president right there.
Let's move on. We have, uh, had a, uh, motion and a second to, for the approval, uh,
Second reading.
Second, for the second reading, uh, counselor.
Bill number twenty twenty-five dash forty-two, ordinance number forty sixty-four, and ordinance authorizing an agreement with Central Square for updated server and data migration for the city's police department.
Uh, uh, Madam Clerk, please, please call the roll.
Neil.
Aye.
Rains.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Moores.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Sagaster.
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, by a vote of eight ayes and zero noes, we have approved bill number twenty twenty-five forty-two. As amended earlier, there is a, uh, an item now on the agenda called water.
Okay, I would, um, like to make a motion, well, discuss it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I want to talk about the possibility of an ordinance for wells, water wells inside the city limits.
So I don't know that it would be an ord, it would be, we currently have an ordinance saying you can't, so it would be taking the ordinance off the books.
Either a repeal and replace or an amendment to that ordinance.
Uh, uh, counselor?
Which would be in the seven hundred, it'd be seven hundred ish.
That, uh, uh, there, there was raised, uh, also, uh, some, uh, some conflict of interest, uh,
Yeah, we're not on this.
Okay, on, on, okay.
The septics.
All right, that's fine.
They're gonna be two separate subjects because there are two separate ordinances in our codes.
We have nine A and nine B.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
For the, the well, so, so the discussion is currently there's an ordinance that you can't have a well in the city limits of Oliver. The conversation we want to have is can we remove that ordinance to where you can have a well in the city limits of Oliver? Now, you would still have to follow DNR and EPA and all those regulations. And I think we, you know, we've talked about it before to where there's, right, currently there's three hurdles. If you, if you wanted to put a well inside the city limits of Oliver and the EPA said you can do it, and the DNR said you can do it, city says, yeah, you can't do it. So what, while we're, you know, talking about discussing is can we take that third hurdle out? And if you jump over the EPA hurdle and jump over the DNR hurdle, then you're able to do that, so.
Guidelines are more than adequate for what we have in the city of Oliver, I would believe.
Okay, um, I've been considering this myself and I would like to interject here if I might. Um, there's a, there's a saying that goes around in government circles, something like this. It's been attributed to a number that if you, if you know to ask the right questions, that decisions almost make themselves. And what we're talking about here is momentous. It is permanent, it is irrevocable. And we are going to have to ask ourselves some very, very pointed, deep questions and explore this in all its aspects very deeply because of the, of the irrevicability of it. If we would, would allow this, there's no turning back. It's either, it's done and, and it's not like a, uh, trying to get, uh, parking off the street.
So, so a question I have to that is, could another board say that doesn't agree with us make an ordinance saying that you can't have wells?
I, I am saying that there are a number of stakeholders in this that have not even, that we haven't really taken into consideration that I think we must, we have to. What about, uh, developers? Are there, are there, uh, actually, uh, are there actually places, are there actually tracts of land in the, uh, in the city that are far away from, from existing lines? That, that might even do that? And if there are, uh, will the existence of, uh, a well, uh, wells, uh, make that, make those parcels, uh, make those parcels, uh, unacceptable for development, further development? We, we, we deserve, we deserve to have the people who might know that come testify on that. For real estate agents that, uh, we have one.
We have, we have good, we have two.
We got three.
Oh, technically three, yeah.
Uh, is, are, is the existence of something so permanent like this going to be a, going to be difficult to make, uh, for, for those parcels to be, uh, to be, retain their value o- over time?
If I can interject right there, I believe the existence of wells would actually increase the property value.
Uh, that needs to be explored in depth.
So, so I, my, my, my take on, I mean, like, I feel like the city has an ordinance saying we can't do something. The state says you can do it.
Right.
DNR says you can do it, EPA says you can do it. And, you know, we had it, you know, in place, and so now all we're saying is it, you know, the thing is, if, if we say you can have a well inside the city limits of Oliver, there are still guidelines and regulations that, like, I, you know, I can't just go home and, to my house and dig a well. You know, I've got to get it approved, I've got to, you know, go through, uh, the hoops with the state and the EP, and then if I wanted to, you know, there's, and so all I'm saying is not like, I, I don't foresee us taking this off the books and everybody putting a well inside the, I don't foresee there being a whole lot of people who do it. What I'm saying is the city shouldn't be in the way of anybody if they want to do it and they pass all the guidelines. And they do, you know, like, in, and, and I understand, you know, I, I, I mean, I, I, I agree on some points here, you know, I, I disagree a little on the monumental, you know, side of this, uh, you know, I.
You do not believe that, uh, wells, uh, are, are permanent?
Yeah, if I, if I, I mean, to an extent, uh, but like, I think that if.
You do not believe that wells are irrevocable?
Well, I think that, I think that if we say you can have a well in the city, that doesn't mean down the road, you can't say like, you know.
Take it out?
No, not take it out, but you can say like, for example, you know, if another board wants to come on here and say, we don't want wells in the city. Well, if there's a new construction or things like that, then they could bring and put the ordinance in. Now, if you already have a well, it's probably going to be grandfathered in, but there's going to be no new wells that are built. Just like, for example, when we put the ordinances, I, I, I'm not for sure on this, but you know, Kyle may know, I'm sure there's places in the, in city that have wells, you know, already. And we didn't say like, when this ordinance was passed, you've got to take out your well, you got to do this. So it's just one of those things that, you know, the, the codes change for buildings. And if there's a building, you know, when, when we say, hey, you know, the, the, the building code has changed this year from like, well, we don't go and say every building that has not up to code, you've got to change, you know, this building to meet up to code. No, if that building, if they want to do something or, you know, upgrade, sure, they do that. But just because you take off an, an ordinance or enact an ordinance, it doesn't necessarily retroactively affect everybody or futuristically for the end of time. You know, if, again, we could have an election in April and there could be a to- totally new board in here and they say, you know what, we don't think you should have wells in the city. We want to make an ordinance where you can't have a well in the city and it's the same exact ordinance that we have now, so.
And so you extract the wells that were, were built.
You grandfather a man like you do on most things, so, uh, I mean, that's, that's the thing. And, and I would assume that there's probably not going to be hundreds of wells, you know, that are built. I would be curious to see what the actual number would be of what we could have inside the, I, if I'm a betting person, I don't know that anybody in the city is going to get a well. But I don't want to be the person to tell you that you can't get a well. I want you to make that decision on your own and, you know, with the regulations that are already set forth by the state.
Well, we haven't even exhausted the number of stakeholders that, that are, and if we would, uh, identi, first of all, you would need to identify the, the extreme, the very few, almost for certain, the very, very few places where there would be even, uh, a well allowed.
I guess the question I have is why would we need to identify that? If somebody wants to.
Well, because, be, no, because, because.
We're not putting it in forum.
Because a, uh, one of the stakeholders in this, that we would have to, that we would have to, uh, uh, find, we would have to address and have them express themselves are neighbors. We find out who, uh, uh, who are the people who would be near, nearby, the, where are these places? Where are these places? Where, no, 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 where are these places? Because there are very few of them.
I, I think she was trying to tell you.
Go ahead, please.
The way this works, if a citizen decides they want a well, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to contact a well driller and a pump installer. The pump installer certified by the DNR comes to your property, assesses it, does all the measurements, looks at the soil, does geological maps and everything else. They tell you whether or not your land is capable of having a well. They tell you where you can put your well on your property. And they actually have maps at the DNR of every well in this state, including the one on my property. I love my well, by the way, that water is, it tastes wonderful.
That's, they're fine.
Sorry, was there more, were there, after that, were, are the neighbors involved in anywhere the process?
If the neighbor wants to have a well also, same process. The pump installer comes and he does the exact same thing he did for the neighbor. He gets a hold of the DNR, they map out everything, the DNR will probably say yes if they meet the setbacks on the distance between the two wells.
Uh, Alderman Price, I got a quick question. So what I, what I'm trying to hear from the mayor is there's this well that's going to be in his backyard, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, again, I'm thinking oil rig. It's not an oil rig, it's probably just like a little three by three enclosed.
Yeah, it's very small.
So it's, yeah, so it's not this huge, big thing that's making noises and all that.
And you can put a wellhouse over it that's the size of a doghouse.
Sure, so that's, that's what I'm looking at. I mean, I'm not, I'm focusing, it's a little doghouse.
To put in perspective, almost every, I would assume, I mean, almost every house in the county has a well.
Exactly.
You know, so when you drive through the county, you don't see big oil there, you know, there, most of them, yeah. So, so again, all I'm saying is I don't think the city should be a stepping stone in the way if somebody wants to explore the avenue of having a well inside the city of, that's, that's my personal opinion, it's been that way for a long time. I don't think we should get in and say, if they meet the regulations that are already set forth by the state, the EPA, the, you know, DNR, and they meet all those, the, you know, I, I guess the question I would have is, why would the city have it on the books to where you can't have a well inside?
That was gonna be one of my questions.
Is that, like you've got, yeah.
I don't, no, no, gosh, I, I've, I've got some things that I think you guys should consider though, and don't let me tell you what to do. Um, but obvious, and I agree, there may be one or two properties in the entire city as it sits now that could add a well. Um, but some concerns that I've had, as I've thought about this more, um, would be, um, although DNR will let you place the well and they will let you build it, as long as it's built to specifications, that gets it installed. After it's installed and these things start to age, does, I mean, DNR doesn't get involved at that point unless and until there's a known problem and then somebody reports it. So is the city gonna have to start regulating and getting permitting and testing requirements to make sure the water quality on these wells stays the way it needs to be, that they're not leaking? Um, and then how many wells could there be within the city before it starts to affect the aquifers and the city water supply?
I agree.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, but these are just things, and I don't know the answers to, but I think we should find the answers to before we do something like this. Um, that's just my advice. Um, other things I would have concerns about would be, um, assuming that there are only one or two people that could get wells within the city, um, and they do it appropriately, um, is that going to cause some problems with the rest of the citizens that are paying utility bills that now only two people get to get themselves out of? Is there going to be an equal protection problem that we're gonna face in the future if?
Well, you know, I, I guess the question I would have is like, for example, we have a neighborhood over off of Killingsworth that has, uh, Southwest Electric inside the city limits. And so, you know, they have a different electric, electric provider, and so is that one of those that, you know, Southwest services the three roads, you know, over there? And so like, hey, you know, we have something separate, it's, it's one of those.
Solar on your house.
Yeah, you have solar on your house, it has.
And we don't have regulations on our solar.
Yeah, and, and so, so, yeah, so, you know, I, I, you know, I, I, I would be less, now, as far as the testing and things like that, like, I, I don't know, uh, at the state level, I think, you know, I know in, in the real estate side, when you go to sell a house, they're gonna have, you know, you're gonna test it and I'm assuming it's probably gonna need to be shocked and all that, so, but, yeah, if you know the answer, go ahead.
I actually called Jeff City earlier this, we are, uh, at the end of last week, sorry. Um, Michelle Oglesby was the lady in charge that would give all the answers for this and she saw no obstacles to put, to allowing this ordinance because not every lot is going to be able to have a well due to setbacks, available space, because, you know, people put their house in the center of their property and if it's a small lot, they've wasted all their space for setbacks. Um, so she saw absolutely no issue whatsoever with this and really didn't anticipate any problem with, uh, the Springfield Plateau, the aquifer, what it, however we're describing it. Um, yeah, she, she actually, when I asked if there was going to be any issues with this, she said no. Now, honestly, most cities go the opposite direction, but they are bigger cities like Springfield and Willard and ones that are larger than us.
That was gonna be my question, and I, I realize that it may not be a common approach. If it's a no one else does it approach, that I'm not quite enough of a pioneer in spirit to be like, well, then obviously we should be the first. We might be the first, but I, I would be curious, we've made a lot of use of resources that the MML has made available to us over the years. We've made a lot of use of resources that the M M L has made available to us over the years. But to find out, even if it's not very many, even if it's only small towns, but to be able to reach out to any communities that currently allow within municipal, that, that have a water system and allow for wells. And find out if they've had, do they, do they check in on, do they have permitting? Do they, anything, any issues that that has happened? Because I would love to not be the first one to discover the problems.
I may have described the very last of that, not well.
Okay.
Because, you know, the nature of your question. While, while most cities that she, that contact her are wanting to go the opposite direction and make ordinances.
Prohibiting wells.
Prohibiting wells. That's not to say that other cities just, they're not doing anything. They're keeping their city water and their wells, and they don't wish to change.
Right.
There are lots of municipalities that have both.
So I think that.
All the way throughout the state.
In addition to any stakeholders that we want to have conversations with, and I'm, I'm a big fan of conversations with stakeholders.
Sure.
I'm a big fan of collaborative decision-making and benefiting from other people's wisdom. Um, if we want to make a list of who we want to talk to, I think we make a list and start working on it so that we don't just view it as an insurmountable obstacle and make no forward motion. Um, but I would say another piece of that for me would be to reach out to some of those communities to find out, have there been problems? How have you dealt with aging wells? How have you dealt with, have, have neighbors of someone who has a well, is that ever something that people are upset about? For whatever reason, not having been neighbors of someone with a well, I, I don't know what that would look like. But are there possibilities to find out? Um, and that way we know, these communities we've talked to, they've said, it's no problem, the two things coexist. It's not a big deal. This is how they deal with aging infrastructure of the wells, all of that. And then we would be on much firmer footing to be able to make a decision. But that, that is a piece that I would love to see, just that like, hey, has, is someone else already doing this? And what's their experience been like?
Another stakeholder, Liberty. Do we have a contract, uh, with, uh, Liberty to provide, uh, the water services?
Well, they have the ability to provide water services, obviously, because they have a franchise agreement.
Okay, so if a, if a, uh, individual who is currently on the Liberty system wishes to get off of the Liberty system and, and drill his own well. Uh, what are the, uh, uh, what are the legal obstacles as far as the contractual obligation, obligation that we have with Liberty?
Oh, that's something that we, I would probably be, at this point in time, uh, uh, probably would want to discuss that in executive session. As that would be a, a legal issue, Mr. Mayor, but, um, we can discuss that.
Okay.
May I impart a, a little story?
Go ahead, please.
The, uh, town hall we had a year ago, well, not us, it was at the American Legion. Was that in August? It was, I think it was, it was about a year ago. I was there and visiting with, um, the ladies. I have a well on my property. The only thing my well does is my outside water and the cold water in my kitchen sink. Everything else I buy from Liberty. Now, if I wanted to go completely on my well and just pay them for sewer, she told me all I had to do was call in and cancel the water service and explain to them that I only want septic.
Well, we have to, uh, get some clarifications on that, if that is, uh, if that is a fact. Counselor. So the legal aspects of it. Uh, codes, what codes are there in place that, uh, we are, uh, I mean, are there building codes in, in place that, uh, tell about the spec- specifications of a, of a well?
The D N R has all sorts of.
Yeah, there are extensive regulations that, that cover the installation. Again, my concern would be what happens after they're installed and they start to age, which I'm sure we can get the answer to those questions.
What about fire service? If, if a area wants to have a well, can they, can they then have a fire hydrant?
No.
That would still be on Liberty.
That would be Liberty.
But, uh.
But if they don't have, if they don't, if that's been taken off of service.
The requirement, the requirement for fire service, for hydrants and for service to a building is, is directly addressed within our plat- regulations. So I don't think what you're contemplating right now is changing any of those types of regulations. So right now, there already is, if someone were to create a new subdivision, there's fire hydrant requirements. If they build a certain sized structure or whatever they use, all those different factors that come into play, that there could be fire service requirements within the building, those wouldn't change.
Okay.
We're not talking about taking out infrastructure. What they want to do on their own property.
I will say again, that there is a saying amongst, uh, uh, government that if you know to ask the right questions, ask the right questions, that, that decisions virtually make themselves. And while there is great, uh, uh, angst against our service provider.
This isn't about angst.
There is a great angst with our service provider. I think that, uh, uh, we need that there are, there are great, there are profound questions that, that have got to be answered clearly and positively before something irrevocable is allowed to go forward.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you, uh, you, you've talked about the different stakeholders that you would like to weigh in on this. But the, the, the posture of your responses to this, I wonder if you come back and the realtors say, we think this is great for development, and the developers say this is great for development. And D N R says, we don't have a problem, and Don says it's fine. And like, at that point, do you think you would feel differently once you had all of that information? Or do you think at the end of the day, even if all of those stakeholders agree with this and are supportive, your misgivings about this would, would persist and you would still be opposed to it?
I will say what I have said to begin with. If you know to ask the right questions.
What questions?
What questions are you?
That's the, that is, that is what we have to, that is, is, is the whole point. What are the, what are the right questions? And I'm not sure that we have, we have, uh, we have found the right questions. I think with the, uh, with the stakeholders that I have, uh, mentioned here, that if, uh, if there are, uh, if there are parcels that have been identified as, uh, compatible to wells, if there are neighbors who, who do not have any objection to them, if there are, if there are developers who would, uh, who, who believe that the presence of wells is, is, uh, if, if we had testimony for the, for, from people who might, uh, might ex- expand, uh, the housing in, in Bolivar. If, if those people would, uh, would find absolutely, if the answer, if the answers, I, I would say again, if you know to write, if you know to ask the right questions, the decisions almost make themselves.
So I guess the question I would ask to the citizens of Bolivar is, would you like an option potentially to where you could drill a well inside the city? I mean, that, that would be my question, and so we would.
Offer a town hall?
Well, I guess, I guess part of what I'm asking again is, I, I understand that you have misgivings and that you feel that we are not ready to make this decision.
Absolutely not.
What I'm having trouble imagining is a circumstance when you feel that we will be ready.
Well, I would, of course, I, I am not a party to the, uh, the final decision. Unless it's a close vote. And so, uh, I am presenting my misgivings, and I think they are valid misgivings.
Right, my, my, when, when is the circumstance, when you, can you imagine a circumstance where you would say, we've got all the information? The time has come, we are ready to make this decision.
If we could, if we can continue, i- if we can continue to ask the right questions from the right people and get, uh, a, a positive response, there's probably no reason to, to stand in the way.
So a question I would have is, who decides what's the right question? Is it me?
That is, that is, that is always the debate. It's always the debate.
And, and so, so you know, to me, I, you know, I think there have been some good questions. Like, uh, you know, I think Don's brought up a great point about, is there something with maintenance? If we do have a well, you know, fifteen, twenty years down the road, is there something that other cities have articulated, you know, with that? Does the D N R have something? Um, I think every other kind of, and you know, to Alderman Neal's point, is there other cities, you know, that do? I can tell you just from a quick Google search, you know, cities our size like Clinton, Logan Rogersville, Willard, they all allow, you know, wells inside the city limits. Now, I can't say like, what are their policies and procedures and what are, now, that's something that maybe we can look into before, you know. But this is something that I would, you know, I would love to find an answer to those questions. And then of course, an answer to the one that we're probably, I'm going to assume now talk about in executive session. Uh, you know, an answer to that one, and if we get, you know, the answers that, that are, you know, uh, appeasable, that, then, then I'd say, you know, it would be my, uh, you know, thought process to move forward with, you know, removing that. Now, if we get answers that aren't, uh, you know, great and like, oh, hey, there's, you know, there's going to be old wells. And I'm assuming that, and Kyle, you may know this, you may not know, I'm assuming we have old wells in certain places in town already. And there's, we don't really check on those or have a way to, you know, check. If I were to say, we probably have more.
Our current code allowed, allows and would allow wells to continue. It also allows wells to, new wells to be dug if they are beyond a hundred feet from an existing water line. So I mean, that, that provision exists.
Do you know how many wells we have inside the city?
Oh, I don't, no, I don't.
If you're in Ball Park.
No, I mean, the city owns a few wells, is, I mean, like, we, we have one at the airport, which is not in our corporate limits, but we function it like someone would have to potentially, when a well has a problem, we have to support, uh, data. We have to provide data and testing to D N R and, and things like that.
If we were to take this up in a month, and I'm, I don't care if it's a month, I don't actually care about the timeframe, but be pick a time. And we say, we would love for staff to reach out to X number of cities to ask about what their experience has been like with having both of those. Um, and, um, and also to reach out to X number of local developers, X number of realtors. Go through that list of stakeholders. I, I don't want to, I realize staff has actual, you know, other jobs that they're doing. But like, whatever the time is that would be needed to get this information, to address and give, have an opportunity to weigh in for people to sort of, a little quieter, maybe they don't, maybe a developer doesn't want to stand up at a town hall and say, you should all stay on Liberty because I don't want to develop wells or whatever. They may not want to say that, so. Um, but if we can have staff or whatever appropriate person, E D P might be a resource, I don't, I don't know. Somebody who could talk to some of these stakeholders to find out, um, and then like I said, communities. Um, we could be in a position to have, have, to make a decision with much more information within a fairly, fairly short timeframe, I would think, based on the questions that I'm hearing.
And I agree with that, you know, and I like that. I think that, you know, there, there have been some good questions, you know, and concerns brought up. So let's see if we can address those and get those answers and bring it back, you know, relatively. And again, if it takes a month, two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, you know, yeah, I, it's one of those. Again, I will always say, I, my thought process is the city should not be a roadblock in this. We should give the citizens, if they have the ability and they check all the boxes with, uh, D N R and the E P A and the regulations and all that. I think that we should allow them to do this, but that, but you know, but again, there are some very good questions.
Thomas, about what, what would be a manageable timeframe to be able to accomplish some of that information gathering that we've talked about tonight?
I think we need at least have a month.
At least a month?
I don't think two weeks is enough to do.
That's fair.
And I would almost suggest maybe doing something similar we did with the I T. It, it seems like Alderman, uh, Tricia, she, she, you know, is pretty knowledgeable. And maybe another Alderman be part of that to, so we're asking the right questions, getting the information that the board wants.
I'd get in on that. I'd jump in on that. I'd definitely, if.
Um, so.
Who wants to jump in on that group?
Based.
Okay, so me and you.
Based on, based on what I've heard so far, and I don't mean to overlook anyone's questions, if there's more questions or more people to reach out to. Uh, yeah, I would say just, but based on what I'm, what I'm recalling from this conversation, developers, communities who have a similar, uh, situation, especially with regard to the maintenance questions. Um, realtors, um. I don't know, was there another, huh? I don't know how you reach out to neighbors.
Yeah.
Well, if we.
And I don't know what implications there are for neighbors either.
The right questions.
I don't understand why a neighbor's objection would matter.
I mean, we, we.
I mean, I know that sounds a little cold.
No, I mean.
Red house, why would my neighbor?
Well, as, so as chair planning and zoning, like, there are things, there are changes that happen to someone's property that the neighbors are, that their property is affected by those choices. So there are some times where we say, they don't have a veto power, but they get a chance to come to planning and zoning and say, hey, we don't want our, uh, you know, a commercial property right in the smack in the middle of our residential area or whatever. So there are times when we say, neighbors who feel that this would affect them, have an opportunity to be heard in the process. I, I, again, not having experience with wells, I don't know how relevant that specific piece is because I don't know how it affects, if it actually does have an effect. Um, but I don't know that we would be able to do that unless and until there is, um, someone who wants to put in a well. So I don't know, it might be worth asking if some of those communities, do they have like a notice requirement and an opportunity for neighbors to object? If there's a permitting, the city approves and the city says you need, we don't forbid you to have a well, but you have to send a letter to your neighbors and they have to have a chance to come down and explain why it would damage their property value if you had, I don't know. I don't know if that's anything that would be useful. But that's what I'm saying, like, if it was, if it was something like that, like it may be, but I would assume other communities would have had an opportunity if neighbors of these communities.
To the other cities that have.
That's going to be a big, a huge piece of that. But anyway, any other stakeholders that people, I just want to make sure we give staff clear direction as to who we're expecting them to reach out to so that we're not just like, go get information and they come back and we're like, well, did you get this information? And then it was not something we told them, so.
Mr. Elfrin, do you have a perspective?
No, I, I think, I think we're on the right path there. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I think if we, uh, you know, try to answer those questions of the board members and, you know, I think it's important. We look at the, the legal ramifications as well. I think that's an important factor. Um, and then, you know, get all the information we can to, to present to the board. I think it's a good idea. I would like to have a couple of Aldermen be part of that committee, so we're making sure we're getting all the information needed.
Okay, we'll do that. All right, we're moving on.
Sewer.
Sewer.
And this is where I declare that I have a conflict of interest because I am an O W T S certified installer with twenty acres and plans to, if it's passed, put a sewer on my own property.
So I, I, I mean, just to like maybe jump the line and do, if it's something, maybe have the same parameters with the well and do, do everything with the wells to the sewer and go around there, and I'd say we do that and come back and figure that out.
So when you're talking to the cities about their water and their wells, ask them what they do about septic tanks or whatever and how that goes. What's?
As I may be involved in it, uh, can I get some clarity? I know some mention was made about having already had a conversation with Liberty or something about this. Do you want them to be part of the folks that we're asking these questions of? I think in particular, as it relates to sewer, that might be pertinent.
How could you not?
If I can be involved in any way in this.
Yeah. I mean, they, my concern is that, I think the like, critical question to them would be, what you referred to earlier is, do they, do they allow a, a well, you know, here that's going into the, the sewer system?
Do they allow someone to take, to. Do they meter it separately or, you know? And install a, what, what's the?
Well, I just, that's what I mean, is would they go on record for that?
What's the abbreviation?
O W T S.
O W T S, it's onsite wastewater.
Yes, O, O W T S, which is the, the septic system.
Right.
A, a personal septic system.
So, so we have an expert on the board. I feel like we should be able to hear what the expert has to say about the issue we just. I feel like we should be able to hear what the expert has to say about the issue we just brought.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request permission to answer any factual questions that may arise during the discussion. Ensure all my responses are neutral and limited to providing factual information only.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I can answer any questions as long as they're straightforward.
I think to Kyle's point, I think it would make sense, um, I guess I don't know if it would have to be a decision at the, uh, or a conversation at the beginning to find out, to find out if sort of a split option is available, uh, uh, for, for individual customers. So essentially is what you're asking, right, Kyle? If someone wanted to have a well, but not necessarily go so far as to do the OWTS, would that be something that would be an option?
Yeah, and I think, and maybe, or Bryce can answer this. I think that if you look at which one would be more restrictive ultimately on lots, I'm thinking of lot sizes within the city. You're probably going to find the wastewater.
Sure.
You know, being the more restrictive. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's my point is, is if you're, if the intention of the board's consideration is to open this door, I think you need to know, is it really open or not for people practically? So we're not, you know, just play make believe, you know?
Yeah, yeah, no, it makes, it makes perfect sense. Um. On, at what point?
I mean, it would be a lot of the same, same things I'm concerned about now. I mean, and I would assume, uh, and I hate to assume, uh, but I, I would assume that the septic would require a lot more maintenance and service as it ages. And again, once they're there, does DNR have a way to make sure you keep up with, on your maintenance? Or is that gonna be up to the city? And is the city only gonna find out once there's a problem?
That actually is not DNR. That is, uh, DHSS, Department of Health and Humans or, or Senior Services. And also Polk County Health Center. They, uh, have very strict guidelines on design, installation and maintenance.
Alderman, first I have a question. Is it just like with wells, you have to have a certain setback and requirements like that?
Absolutely. There's setbacks to everything.
I guess, Don, I was wondering if you had thought specifically about, um, whether Liberty would need to be part of staff's outreach and information gathering during these next month or so in order to find out whether it's possible to have, to, to be on Liberty's system for wastewater while, and, and also have a well. Like, uh, uh, cause that was what, that was what you're asking, right? It's like, so as we're.
Yes, I'm just trying to clarify if you want them contacted.
Do we need to talk to Liberty about that at this stage as opposed to later?
I think we would have to, if they, if they have somebody that's willing to talk to us, obviously. I mean, I, I would have questions. I mean, is there, uh, if there's a well that's leaking, is there a possibility of cross-contamination with, with having sewer and a private well? Um, and these are all things that I had, don't know the answers to, but I think we would need to have those, or, or would want to have those answers.
Yeah.
So have we decided how we are moving forward?
I think so.
My only question would be if we have two Aldermen who are helping in that process and one of them is maybe not allowed to. I don't know what, I guess Alderman Price, what would your, would you be able to still participate as sort of the consulting Alderman in this process, given your?
Don, would I be allowed to do a fact-finding mission in?
And be involved as the?
Hand over the facts, paper, whatever, and then stay out of discussion and voting afterward.
I think that would be, you're gonna hate my answer. This is gonna be a real lawyer answer, but I think that would be up to you. If you think you can be impartial and deliver facts without breaking your obligation, your ethical obligations as the office holder, I think you can do it.
I guess my other question would be, do, does staff want, if there's gonna be a limitation to your involvement? If at some point you're gonna bump up against a barrier where you're like, I can't, I can't consult with you, I can't work with you on the decision-making, whatever it is in this little subgroup. Do you want an additional Alderman who can participate fully? Are you okay with Dusty and whatever Tricia's involvement can be as she deems appropriate? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I think we'd be fine either way. I, I will have a wide supply of questions to work through on this as well. It, there won't be any shortage of questions to be able to sort through and provide some information.
We appreciate you, Kyle.
Have we exhausted the discussion? Uh, are we, uh, do we have items on the, uh, executive session?
Well, we, we have Alderman comments.
Oh, oh, the Alderman comments, okay.
So I've got one quick one, real quick. Uh, had somebody reach out to me this week, you know, we switched from Facebook to YouTube to broadcast our, uh, meetings. That's where I was looking for. Uh, on YouTube, we have the comments turned off, so people can't comment on them. And I got a angry phone call this week of somebody not being able to comment like they could on Facebook during our meetings with maybe concerns or thoughts that they had. So, uh, I said I would bring it up. And like me personally, I, I'm all for, if we wanna turn comments on, you know, turn them on, but I, I, you know, we currently have them turned off, so.
Following up on that, um, I know the comments on Facebook were often how we would identify a techno, technical problem. If there was a sound issue, we'd get someone who would come and be like, hey, just so you know, the sound isn't working or whatever. And I had wondered with the comments off on the YouTube.
I, I just get lots of text messages and then I just text Brent like, hey, people can't hear, there's feedback.
Maybe have a good way to get, but I just, if people were having trouble watching that and they didn't have an easy way to reach out and say, hey, the sound isn't working, or hey, the video's not, whatever. Um, but if there's, if there's another channel, if we wanna say, even communicate like, hey, if you're having any issues with this, please do X thing.
Just text me.
Text Dusty. Um, um, just, just as a way to know that, because that was an actual, in addition to the conversational aspect, that was a very specific, practical, um, thing that the comments provided.
I would, personally, I, I, I don't mind them being on. Like, I would rather them be on than off, but that's just me, so.
Can we put a disclaimer of if you have questions, email this? Maybe we do already, but I assume this was partially by design to make it so that we are not responsible for covering YouTube and Facebook and everything.
I know what you're gonna say.
This was in an automatic setting that Facebook or YouTube automatically has set. So we left it the way that it automatically is set up. Um, we know at least one other organization here does the same thing. The school district doesn't have comments turned on on theirs. The only comment I would have is that there is some personal responsibility for someone to come into the office, sign up to come in and speak with you in person. And, you know, there is that element of being here, coming, standing before the board, giving your name, your address, and you've got five minutes to speak. That would be one consideration you might wanna take into.
You know, and I agree with that, but there are some people who, maybe they have limitations, they can't make it to, you know, meetings or things like, and so then it's like, well, you know, your questions, you don't ha, and, and, you know, like, like personally, it, it, it's one of those that on Facebook, you know, I, for, for the most part, I will preface it with that, you know, I enjoyed the com, because there, you know, there were some, some things up there that when somebody would come up and give a, you know, give a presentation, there would be somebody on Facebook that would say, you know, well, what about, you know, this? And I'd go, oh, yeah, what about that? And then, you know, we could ask that and get, and so I understand the, sign up, take your time, come in and address, you know, if you have a concern, things like that, but I still think.
I think in general, we don't allow random comments from the audience during, when you're talking about IT or.
Sure.
We don't allow random comments.
And I don't, and I don't have to, I don't have to read the comments on here and they don't disrupt the meeting if somebody comes in here and stands up and yells.
For a topic, they're getting input online that other people who came here don't get.
Wouldn't be able to.
Sure, they can hop on their phone and make a comment on YouTube from sitting, you know, from sitting right there, so.
I assume we have an avenue, right? We have a phone, a number you can call or an email address for sending these questions if you had questions.
They've all got Dusty's phone number.
They would be addressed afterwards. I don't think anybody wants to be live answering questions.
Right, on the website, we have all of your phone numbers and email addresses there posted. They can call us at City Hall anytime. We have twenty-four seven. We get questions and comments on the website. Uh, it's super easy. You go to the main page and there's a spot that you can click to make comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and everybody knows Dusty.
Not just me, there's, I mean, I mean, I would prefer to have them turned on, but, but yeah.
Action to turning comments on.
I think it's beneficial because it allows for that interaction. Like, if I'm watching something, I'm not gonna remember twenty minutes later. Like, it, it's.
It's not always a question in the middle of the meeting. Sometimes it's a critique on whatever. You know, I, I didn't like the way Tricia kept interrupting actually all night.
I second that.
Yeah, that, it's totally up to you. I mean, we have had it this way for four months. Four months, maybe we've been on YouTube and it's the first time we've heard anything. Honestly, we set it up and like, it was running.
I, I just assumed comments were on until, until I got a, an angry conversation and, you know, I texted, uh, and I was like, hey, why is, why weren't, and he's like, I haven't been on. And I was like, I, you know, so, so, I mean, again, I'm, I'm all for, you know, giving people the avenue and, you know, if they want to, you know, so.
Are there any sunshine con, uh, law considerations about having comments? Can people, I don't comment on YouTube myself. So I don't know if people delete it later, will we have it captured so that we can have it for sunshine? I know that's been something that's come up on social media. Okay, so if we would, we would potentially need to take steps to make sure that any comments are captured and preserved. Okay, so that could be a reason. Another, and I, I realize this would not be as convenient. Another option, that maybe it would just make everyone unhappy, would be to have a Facebook post that says, this is the comment post for this meeting. And then people wanted to have conversations about it or, or do that, that there would be a place that's on an established, um, network that you could do that. Now, obviously, that's not gonna be as convenient as while you're watching and just being able to type. But I do appreciate Brent's point of, you know, people who are here in person, all of them. Um, um, that their interaction, um.
Just yelling out there.
Yeah, their ability to influence the discussion would be non-existent mostly. Um, unless they chose to participate online, which not everyone is capable or inclined to do. So I, I, I'm not, I'm not insensitive to the argument of, do we want to say you have better in some ways, access to and ability to influence the progress of the meeting, um, remotely than you do in person? Um, I, I, I think that's a fair question to ask.
Um, my question would be, did we have the sunshine safeguards on Facebook where we were capturing all of that?
And there's logistics of how do we convey that during the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Cause not everybody watches YouTube. So do Jill and I have to sit here and raise our hands to say, so-and-so said that they like what Dusty's comment was, or not like what Dusty's comment was?
I, I think.
I mean, so, so, so there's a, there's a whole interaction of, that needs to be, if it's in the bed, it needs to be conveyed to everybody. And how does that look?
So the, the question I have is why do we switch from Facebook to YouTube? Because we said it would be easier because you have, it would be easier to watch because you don't have to have, you know, a, account and all that. And so, you know, but, but I look at it and.
We lost one aspect.
You know, it, it's, it's one of those, it's, it's easier to watch, but you know, there's no interaction. And, you know, I would be curious to see, are there more people watching that it's on YouTube or less people watching now that it's on YouTube and?
I would guess it's less.
Because I mean, sometimes we have six viewers right now.
Hi. Yeah, and, and so.
One may watch it.
So I can watch it tomorrow.
Sure. But like, you know, when we were on Facebook, we would, you know, have, you know, seventeen, eighteen hundred, you know, views. There, we'd, we'd have twelve people watching alive and then they'd go back and there'd be, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred that, that, you know, have watched. And, and so, you know, even with that, like, they could watch it and then post a question. We may, I, I don't know. I just, I am all for interaction and the thought of, you know, if they wanna post a question, post a question.
Do we post a link to each YouTube video on the Facebook page to say, here's the completed, like, so that you can watch? I know, I know there's the announcement of like, you can find this on YouTube, but I mean, like afterwards where it's in, the specific individual file, like the meeting for tonight's thing, post that to Facebook, like, here you can watch.
No, they, we trust that you can see that we're having a meeting and you can sure go back and look at that. I mean, cause if you click that link, it shows you all of our meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And people can go back, they can watch them literally anytime. We have some, um, I think our most watched video is the, of course, utility town hall, and it had something like ten thousand views. Um, and the other meetings, same as with Facebook, do not get as many views.
Is there, and, and I think we talked about this when we started the transition, but there's no way to have two, one for YouTube and one for Facebook?
Um, you, I don't think so, but our equipment.
We, we can't, we only stream to a single source. You have to have multiple systems to, to, to stream.
And, and is that a, just another computer or is that?
I don't, I don't know, um, I mean, anyone can view YouTube videos, so.
I guess there's no real reason to stream on Facebook, okay?
Yeah. We also have a link on the website. People can go to your page, the Board of Aldermen page. And it's like, if you wanna see videos of meetings, click here. And they can go there as well. And we encourage people to subscribe.
Right.
So they can get updates.
Right, so it is, it is accessible. It may be slightly less convenient for some people, less easy. Not, not hard, just not as easy as having it scroll by and the video is currently going in your feed while you're.
It's more, it's less passive.
Yes, yes, thank you. That's a good way to say it.
Yeah.
Um, another, another wrinkle that I, I guess, because you're saying, you know, would you guys have to read the comments in the meetings? Well, that hasn't been our practice at all, right? But, but that's because we've had specific Aldermen on the board who are
Watching.
Watching and engaging and doing that. And that is not a guarantee that that would always be the case. And so, do we want people's ability, do we care about the fact that people's ability to interact with those videos would be dependent on who happens to be on the board at a given time? And how much they're either comfortable with the technology or wanting to interact with, like, I have, I don't, I'm not on my phone while I'm here. And so I'm not, I can look at it later and see the comments, but I'm not, I'm not doing that just because that's, that's how I'm interacting with this meeting. And other Aldermen are doing something different. And so if Dusty's not here one night, then, you know, that could fundamentally change
Mm-hmm.
the expectation and reality of someone participating remotely. So I could see that being like, uh, hey, do we wanna make sure it's a more consistent experience? That you're not like, hey, I was asking questions and no one was answering. Well, yeah, Dusty was on vacation or whatever, so, um.
Sure.
Yeah, anyways, just, just another, another aspect that, that occurred to me. I don't feel super passionate about it, either one way or the other, but I, I had noticed that and was curious.
And then the question is, do we filter those questions to you all? I mean, I can think of East Loop conversations we've had that the comments were not always productive
Mm-hmm.
and aligned with the conversation. So do, we need to make, and I don't know if we get, with sunshine, we can't be strict what we say or what we don't say. You know, every comment's fair. Do we just tell you every comment and it is what it is?
I don't think anyone's asking you to tell us anything. I think they're Aldermen who are interested.
Obligation or, nor should we.
I think it's the Aldermen who want to watch it while it's going on.
Yeah.
Would on their own, yeah, it would not be asking you to be like, curating questions as they come in. Um, cause you, you, your hat collection is obviously looking a little depleted at the time. Um, but no, I think it would be the Aldermen who want to can be looking and seeing those comments and then saying, oh, well, that just reminds me of a question that I totally came up with on my own just now. Um, but I don't think it would be a, it wouldn't, that, that, I don't think what he's asking is to have staff do anything.
I'm just saying, if somebody wants to leave a comment, they can leave a comment. That's, that's what I would like to see. So I don't know.
Wanna try it and see how it goes?
Let's do it.
I would say, I would just encourage you, like, if we do this, if we turn them on, let's leave them on. Like, I would want us just to make whatever choice we make totally consistent.
My only thing would be the legal aspect of the, we're not sure that if.
Let's see if we can get them added to Archive Social and then turn them on.
That we can.
I'm sure we can, but let's get that done.
Alexis's idea, add it to Archive Soc, Social and turn them on.
Yeah, I would say, but I would also say, like, I don't think we have to be wedded to, like, just because we make a decision, this is not, this is not an irrevocable decision. Um, because, like, we know, we know, we've had social media pages for parts of the city government that we've had to shutter because of the way that things went down. So if, if the comment section blows up. Because of the way that things went down. So if, if the comment section blows up, people know sometimes YouTube content providers disable comments. Like, that's a thing we're all familiar with. And so if it ends up being a problem, I think we, we do have that. I'm not saying we whiff a waffle back and forth all the time. But if it turns out that it causes more problems than it solves.
If we can trust those six people to behave.
That's right. Everybody be nice. Don't act like you're in the YouTube comments.
Are there limitations with YouTube that prevent that? I mean, if you turn it on, you're on for everything. Can you specifically for each video on and off like that? Or is it one and, one and done?
It's, it took us a while to figure out. It's, it's deep in the settings of most all the channels, so, so if, we did it for. When we did it for the, uh, the Liberty hearing, it took us, I think it was halfway through when we got it working. Um, cause it's not back end for us, it's not as easy as Facebook was.
Okay.
But it's possible.
Yeah, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Further comments? Do we, uh, what's this, uh, what's this, how, how's this executive session? I have to, have to, uh, get to vote to go into executive session?
Emotion to go Alexis and Neil.
I'm entertaining a motion to go into executive session.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's see what Thomas says.
We don't have a need for executive session tonight.
Do we, do we, do we not?
I think we.
Do you?
I have nothing. You guys know my position on it, so I don't have anything new to add.
You don't want to sing another verse of the same song?
If you would like to go over it, I'm, that's what I'm here for. Yeah, I, I, I wasn't planning on discussing the, uh, the drilling the wells.
Okay.
But the other legal issues, uh, we're not ready to discuss tonight. So that's up to the board to decide if they wanna talk about that more.
Have newer additions to this.
I have a motion to adjourn.
For this song?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.